Okay. Let's go ahead and call the meeting to orders. Call roll please. Centola?
Here.
Guerrero?
Here.
Leeper?
Here.
Oakley?
Here.
Staub?
Here.
Stoll?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
And Mr. Chairman, we're giving this in the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I hate to interrupt your meeting, I have to make a real quick statement here. I'll be out there.
Yep, I was just about to welcome everybody and see if anybody has anything they needed to discuss, so go ahead.
My name is Greg Hutchins, and I am here tonight to take full responsibility for my actions in the conclusion of the Sangin Valley senior night basketball game last night. I'm truly remorseful in my behavior portrayed against the community of Sangin Valley and the student body. I promise to adhere to the demands presented to my wife Kristy earlier today pending further notice. Thank you. Have your time.
Okay. Do you have anybody else on the agenda to speak? Okay. So, we need to discuss the consent agenda. Are there any questions regarding the consent agenda you received in your packets? None? So, we need a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Moved by Leonard, is there a second?
I'll second.
By Mike Staub, call roll please. Guerrero?
Yes.
Leeper?
Yes.
Oakley?
Yes.
Staub?
Yes.
Stoll?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Centola?
Yes.
Okay. Superintendent's report?
I just have a couple of items. I'm going to turn a good portion of my section order of principles, but I did want to let everybody know that our three-year asbestos reinspection report was taken, was all taken care of. No major findings again. We've kind of been working along over the course of the last few years of replacing floor tile, which seems to be the majority of our asbestos is within the floor tile and the mastic adhesive that holds the floor tile down. We do have some other places where it's in some piping, some insulation, some elbows. Most of those places are not easily accessible by the students, so it really poses no threat. So, there was no major findings. Bruce Stoles is now our, kind of our asbestos management contact, and he's been trained on that now, and he will do a six-month reinspection, and they will, he'll continue to do that until the three-year reinspection comes up again. So, it's pretty standard, but there are a couple of places that I would like to see taken care of, and I would like to meet with the building committee sometime with Michael and Mike, and looking at those areas and start prioritizing and start continuing to replace a lot of the floor tile, just off the top of my head. Both kitchens here at the high school and in Sangin Valley East, or Sangin Valley West, sorry, probably need to be taken care of over the summer, which will include an abatement and then tile laid back down. And then, the back part of the K-pack is in pretty rough shape, where the JFL uses for concessions. I would like to go over and take a look at that sometime with the committee and look at the possibility of having that entire room abated, and then if the floor is in a good shape, maybe look at the possibility of doing some sort of grind or sand finish on the concrete, sealing that and then just waxing over that, which is what a lot of, a lot of schools are doing in those places instead of putting in tile and then, you know, having the labor of stripping it and waxing that year after year after year. The concrete, finishing it would probably be about the same cost as doing the tile, but maintenance would be a lot cheaper year to year. For that room, it's something that we don't use on a regular basis, but yet is, I think, a really nice room for our fall plays and our spring musicals and that sort of thing.
Some of the paint seals for concrete are really durable. I know that Ms. Callen, yeah.
So, that's something I would like to look at with the committee. If you have questions on, I'm definitely not an asbestos expert. I do also have to mention that we do have reports that are available in the superintendent's office. I believe I stated in our handbooks that that's one of the things that they want to make sure that I mentioned tonight was that those are available for inspection by the committee in the superintendent's office.
Could we get a copy of the inspection report and then just highlight the areas that you're looking at, one to redo?
They actually, yeah, have a pretty detailed surveillance sheet that I have here that I can provide for you, and you can also take a look at the report, and I think the three of us could sit down and look at that in more detail and come back to the board with the recommendation on how to proceed, so.
Did they give us a timeframe to get this done?
No, nothing was something that was, that had to be done. Most of the reports said if you have major renovation or something, they recommend taking it out. Again, that's the floor tile if you're going to, but I think, you know, the tile in these buildings have definitely served their time, and the new painting of tile and some ceiling tiles really does a lot for the overall appearance of the building. And I think that back room where the JFL has, it's pretty bad shape. I think we had a leaky faucet there for a while that was leaking.
Correct.
Yeah, we can use some attention. It's just too good of a space not to have fixed up and used, so. I am meeting with Randy West, who's our former architect who retired, and our new architect that's coming in. I'm going to meet with him at 1:00. We're going to take a look at the roof of the gym. There's been a spot on that that in our last storm that we had, high winds have peeled this east end kind of over and back. If I remember correctly, I thought we had a 10-year warranty on that when the work was done. I know that's not been 10 years, so we're going to take a look at that and double-check that. And then, one of the other things that I would like to possibly do over the summer is look at a major renovation of the old Family Consumer and Science lab and turn that into a science room, the front half of the classroom and the back half of it being a remodeled science lab. I think that's something that we desperately need here at the high school. Mrs. England has looked at equipment to try to provide those types of things for the kids, and I think we have somebody there that's eager and wants to have that at her availability. I think we need to take advantage of.
Is the roof of Jim causing that leak that's in the hallway with the bucket?
That is, that's something that we're really having a difficult time defining. It could be one of those, there's three or four vents that are over for the restrooms in that area, and I don't know what, it's weird because you could have rain and not have a drop come through that, and then at the weirdest times, it starts dripping water. So, that whole area is flat over above, above that area, and the guttering is bad and probably needs to be looked at as well, and then I think put the new caps on some of those vents and just resealing them, it would go a long way. So, Bruce and I have been trying to wait for a little bit better weather to get up there and take a look and see what we need to do. Anne?
I was going to say, the only time that I have is we are meeting to set our directives and goals, and I don't know if maybe it would be advantageous to meet after, for the building committees to see where everyone is a whole and decides to go and set up those priorities, I guess, listen to what that comes out of.
And then, I also wanted to mention, Mrs. Callen, our new ag teacher and FFA sponsor, she's going to come to the board meeting next month and talk about some of the good things that's been going on in FFA. We did have a FFA kind of sponsored bottled water drive that was in conjunction with the Macon County Sheriff's Department. Deputy Hawthorne, I don't know if all of you met him or not, he is our resource officer, and he is not only our resource officer, but he makes us around all of the county schools in Macon County, and he was a big factor in this, and we were able to come up with, I think, just a little bit over about 518 cases of water that we sent to Flint, Michigan for some of the issues that are going on there. And a lot of those cases were 40 bottles from Sam's that, I don't know how many bottles we ended up with, but it was, for a school of our size, it was significant. And Ashley Ingersoll, I think, was one of the driving forces.
She was a real spearhead and kind of organized it, you know, a lot of it. You got the fire without the worry, and we were able to do that roughly Friday to Friday. It was pretty awesome.
I think it says a lot for our community and how much they care, and so it was, it was great to pull up there with all of that water and see, you know, other people from communities doing the same thing, dropping off that cases and cases and pallets and pallets of water, so kind of a good deal. But she'll come back and talk a little bit more about that and about the FFA, and I think she's also going to, the date has been set for the national convention, and I will add that in your board back the next time. I think she would like to seek approval to attend that event next fall, so she'll be here on the 16th. And that's all, ma'am.
And then, our curriculum directors?
I didn't know, I saw it on the agenda, her new business too. I didn't know if you guys want us to go ahead and talk about finals right now, or?
And I had, yeah, I, just to kind of give some clarification, I had inquired to Bob the situation of what we were doing for finals this year. It was too close to the last meeting, it was on the agenda, so we're doing it this meeting, so if you want to go ahead and get into that, that's fine.
Sure, Mrs. Ananati's here too to share some information and stuff. One of the things we wanted to kind of do was to offer, you know, kind of an opportunity for success, positive reinforcement, to emphasize positive choices within the student body, you know, on a greater scale even than what we were doing before, and one of the avenues, really looking at motivating high school students in that is, you know, tied to finals and taking finals. Different districts do things different ways, and I've known, I mean, even when I was going to high school, some districts that did that, I felt was a large motivator in terms of students, you know, making those better choices. You learn in every behavior class that you take, if you do any kind of behavior classes in school. I had to do a lot of them for my initial degree, but the first thing that they tell you almost every one is, you know, punishment only gets you so far, punishment only, you know, negates a behavior in the presence of the punisher. So, if you want to, you know, teach students through punishment to make the right choices, when it's only going to help if you're around, you know, or you want to teach them to make the right choices to have a transformative change, making the choices, making them a part of their life, you do so with positive reinforcement, and you reinforce those good behaviors. So, tying the finals to looking at, you know, making a certain grade, which in this case is over an 80%, which is our cutoff for B to C, with the realization or the understanding that if a student is able to reach what would be considered an above-average score, which would be a B or above, that they've probably demonstrated, you know, a relatively good mastery of those skills within that time period, you know, which is really what a final is supposed to be. You know, and I know some people would say, "Well, you know, but aren't they going to need those finals for the future? Don't they need those finals to see if they're going to be prepared for college? Will they need finals for this, that, and the other?" There, it's really integrated, the idea and the thought process behind that, because what that is supposed to be is a sign, you know, that, you know, they have reached a certain proficiency by taking this final, this one test, this one bigger test, this high-stakes test, if you will, at the end of the semester, when really what we know is the best practice as an educator, a trained educator, that we should be constantly assessing those skills all the time. We need to constantly assess those skills as we go. If we get to the end game and then we find out, "Well, shoot, they failed that final", well, we can't time travel back to the beginning of the semester and say, "Okay, well, I guess we're going to reteach you all that again." "No, no, you fail, you got to take this part again." You know, so we really need to have those red flags beforehand. So, thinking about that, and you know, there would be like one thing of, "Well, hey, wait, we've got to have these finals, we've got to take these finals." Now, I think they're a really good indicator of, you know, let's go ahead and see, you know, if you weren't there the whole time, or maybe you didn't exactly make that grade. You need to make sure that you have this information, that you've got it, and it's tied to that. That's looking at it from a grade aspect. Another thing that we throw in there is attendance, so having, you know, four or fewer absences over the course of, over the course of the semester. So, that's not tied to anything related to a funeral, basically, you know, or something field trip related, things like that that we don't count. But other things, you know, if you are sick for over four days during that period, it's kind of luck of the draw, but it does promote you from saying, "Okay, well, I'm just not feeling real good, I got the sniffles a little bit, I'm going to stay home from school." And some students will do that, you know, they'll take any opportunity to be absent if they can get away with that. Our cutoff still for excuse absence is eight days over the course of semester. Tardies is another thing that's tied to, to promote students getting to school on time, getting the classes on time, things like that, so five or fewer tardies, I think, is how we had that set up in the policy, you know, and then, of course, we also have an aspect in our behavior, so if the student does do something big enough to where they get what's called a major referral or a big referral than that, they have to take those finals because of that. So, it kind of holds you to, you know, a different standard, and you know, we've seen, I think, we don't have hard, hard numbers on it necessarily, because we're kind of doing a baseline right now, but students really seem in tune with how their behaviors are going to affect that, you know, and even students who you wouldn't necessarily, a lot of times, see as, you know, "Hey, I've got to make sure I get here on time," or "I'm going to make sure I don't do that because I don't want to have to, you know, throw my hat in and take the finals," are much more aware, they're much more aware of the choices they're making from what I can see. Just some rough numbers here is looking, we saw 127 students were able to make it through and take no finals unless they chose to. They can still choose to take finals to practice that skill, and it couldn't hurt their grade, it only helped it. Some students want to decide, "Hey, I want to take the physical science final, I just want to see what's all, I want to see, you know, if I can make a grade on it. You know, I do want to go and take my Algebra I final, because I do want to see if I can bump my grade up a few points in there, you know, by taking it." So, we did see students take advantage of that quite a bit as well. We saw 73 students take all their finals. They had to take all of the finals. That was roughly 29, 30% of our student body that had to take all of them, and then we had another 53 that took at least one final. So, about 71% were able to cleft out of some kind of final, of some kind, some sort. So, we kind of looked at, and I think it's a living, breathing thing. It's going to be tweaked and things, there are certain things we'll see about that we like or we don't like, that we're going to change here and there, but so far, I feel like it's been a real positive move in terms of us using it, you know, to promote, you know, good behavior and promote, and not necessarily good behavior, but just making positive choices, managing time, managing student resources, so on and so forth. So, that's just kind of a little bit of the background behind it, and just kind of the thought process behind trying to do the exemption, and like I said, I think it's been a positive thing. Mrs. Ananati has some numbers to kind of compare now, take into account if it's moving at different years, so on and so forth, but it still kind of gives you a little bit of a picture of kind of what we see, along with a lot of other factors that we've had this year. You know, there's been, you know, different staff turnover for various reasons. You've had, of course, the grading scale was changed to 10 points and more closely aligned at colleges and what really a lot of other schools do, you know, so there's all kinds of factors in there, but you know, I think that this is one of those contributing factors to these numbers, but I'll turn over to her.
Okay, so what I did was I tried to compare first semester grades from this year and the last two years to kind of give us an idea of how this has impacted our student body. So, to just give you a little bit of an idea, this year, our freshmen, at the end of first semester, five students with a total of five failing grades in the freshman class for the first semester. As compared to last year, there were 27 failing grades in the first semester of the freshman class, and the year before that, there were 22 failing grades. The 10th graders, again, five Fs in the sophomore class at the end of the first semester. Last year, 27 Fs, and the year before that, 26. In the 11th grade, this year, six failing grades, last year, 10, and the year before, This year, in the 12th grade, two failing grades, the year before, zero, and the year before that, three. So, as we see upperclassmen, maybe not as big of an impact, but certainly at the freshman and sophomore level, we had a major impact in terms of how many kids were more concerned about making a passing grade and getting their credits the first time through instead of having to retake classes, which has been a big issue from what I've been able to glean from the conversations I've had with kids and looking at their transcripts in the past. So, I think that we made a pretty, a pretty good impact. Again, I've had an awful lot of conversations with kids since I've come over here, and I've heard an awful lot of them being very concerned, coming and talking to me about their grades, wanting to know what they can do to improve, to hit that 80% mark, to help maintain it, coming in, wanting to be on top of things instead of being reactive to their grades or trying to be proactive in addressing their grades. I've had kids come in and talk to me about tardies, about their absences, talking to me about, you know, "Oh, I don't really feel good." Do you really feel horrible, or is it something that you can work your way through today and then maybe go home and rest? And having those kinds of conversations where maybe before they would have just gone home, they're willing to stick it out, make it through the day, and then go home and rest. I'm having parents call me and talk to me about the fact that their kids are trying to figure out ways to make appointments that before, they're like, "Can you do anything to get me in during the school day so that I can get out of here?" And now they're like, "I don't want you to schedule my appointments until after school. Just, I can't miss school. I can't miss this class anymore, don't schedule it then." And they're like, "What are you doing up there?" And so, I'm explaining this policy, and they're like, "Well, it's working, so keep it up." I'm having that conversation multiple times. I think that's a really positive impact for our kids, and the kids themselves are worried about it. They're talking about it, they're taking responsibility for it, it's not us constantly being on their case, it's them worrying about it, and that's what we want, is them taking that responsibility on themselves. That's, that's what we're all wanting to have happen, so I think that's a really big deal.
I think my concern, I think that sounds good, and my concern comes from, we just, this year, are doing the 10-point scale, correct? So, that's just now effective, so in essence, what was a C last year is now a B, and?
To a certain extent, not, I mean, it's not that big this morning.
But you've got, I mean, before, you were, where was it, 83 or 84 and above was a B, right?
That's correct.
Okay. So, I just, I just want to make sure that we're not, you know, making it so, I don't, I don't want to use the words dumbing it down, but that's kind of what I, I want to make sure that we're not doing that and making.
Reporting mediocrity.
Right. And you know, you have, you know, I've kind of looked on the internet, trying to look at other schools, and none of them local, by the way, but schools in the out east and that kind of thing, and they've done something similar, and even at the 80%, but they didn't cut finals altogether. They did, if you met those needs, you skipped 1, 3, 5, and 7 your first semester, and 2, 4, 6, and 8 your second semester, if you made it then. You didn't never take a final. I guess my concern is, I'm picturing children potentially going to school, never taking a final, and the ones that are going on to college, some may not be, some are, you're going to have exams in college, you're going to have, you know, and you have to prepare for them possibly in a different way than you would prepare for your average test and that kind of thing, so I just, I mean, when I first heard there was none, I was just like, "Okay, I need to ask questions about this and find out."
And they're still there, and if you've got that big of a concern about it, you know, I would say, tell your student to take it, even if they don't have to, you know, go ahead and take a final to get prepared for it. They still have to review for them, they still work through that, you know, you know, we haven't gotten rid of them altogether, I mean, they're still there, and you can still take them, you know, elect to take them or cleft out of them if you want to.
So, if we're assessing, what are we doing for assessments then, as far as if you're going through, you're assuming you're 80 and above, you've got basic knowledge of the material, what other things are we doing throughout the year as assessments instead of finals?
Well, everything that goes in that grade book, in my opinion, should be an assessment, you know, to, I mean, you're not going to give the final, even in a college class, without giving all the material before that, you know, that is going to be on that final, and even a lot of your college classes, the ones that do give finals, there's a lot of them, there's a lot of them that you don't, you know, referred project-based, you're writing research papers and things like that in that term, but even those, a lot of times, your instructor is giving, "Here you go, this is what you need to know, here's the whole syllabus with everything laid out on it, here's your study guide," you know, so on and so forth, and, you know, quizzes, tests, unit tests, project-based assessments, all of these other things are assessing that learning. I mean, you don't, you know, it's kind of like, I liken it to, you know, if you're, if you're going to go cook something and say, you know, "I'm going to go and cook a soup on the stove," and I get up there and I get all my ingredients in and I'm just going to throw the pot on it, it takes about 40 minutes to cook it, I'm just going to throw the old pot on it and leave it for 40 minutes, I'm never going to come back and check it, I'm never going to stir it up, well, if you come back, a lot of times, you're going to have something burnt or something that's messed up. If you're not constantly checking and constantly figuring things out and seeing where you're at and how it's doing, you're going to be in trouble, and so we should be, as educators should be constantly doing that. If you wait till the very end to see how it's going to turn out, you're going to be in trouble, you know, and, you know, again, yeah, the final is a big long test, and sometimes, you know, and, you know, a student that is going to get, you know, in theory, I guess, 80% or better than that, you know, they're probably a good student that knows how to prepare for certain things like that, they know how to prepare for those bigger tests that they're going to see throughout the semester too, you know, just as they would the final, which may or may not take the full 90 minutes to take, you know, sometimes they take about a regular class time or a little bit over, you know, there's not a whole lot of difference. And again, they could always take those, you know, even if they're not required to take them.
Your leadership team is made up typically of the core curriculum, the teachers from the core curriculum. What has been their kind of response, or like Mrs. Schrader, I would assume she's still on the leadership team, she lived when I was principal, and she would be one of them envisioning, no final exams of her freaking out and her head exploding.
She did not, her head did not explode. It's still, it's still attached. Her concern, biggest concern that I, that I noted, and of course, there may be she's got more that she just hasn't told me, but had been, these are all the people that I think are out of the finals, and it's the same that she has.
Is it?
Yeah. Coach Lee is on the, on the leadership team as well. I don't know, what is your take on it?
I'm split on it. I understand where stepping's coming from as far as the preparation for, for the kids going on to the, to the next level, and doing it the same year as we switched the grading scale was just kind of a double, a double weighing. There's no doubt there's been positive things, because I've never seen kids worry about their absences more than they did in December. When we started tallying up, "How, how many days have you been gone?", well, it was a big deal if you were under four, I mean, a big deal. And I had kids who I told them they couldn't miss one more day, and they drug themselves here, and it made, it made a big impact, but I do see, I do see both sides of the, of the fence on it to where, you know, I'm not, I don't want to be a mean person or a mean teacher or whatever, but there is certainly something for challenging kids as well, and so our really high students, I think, are maybe, ah, they're maybe getting off a little bit easier than I would like for them to, because they're, they know they're going to probably proficiency out of the whole. because they're, they, they know they're going to probably proficiency out of the whole, of the whole thing. Um, and tho- those are ones that I, I certainly think would need a, would need a challenge. But there, there's some, you know, middle-of-the-road kids who've made, this has made, you know, made a big difference for them. So, uh, I'm more positive for it. I certainly do have some, some of those same smaller concerns though. But overall, it's been positive for the whole school.
I think one of the things that we've done though, that even back as far as I can remember, where we gave incentives, if they did well on the PSAE, they could exempt out on it. The, the thing is, the, the kids that are doing well on the PSAE and they're exempting out the final exams are the ones that are the, going to college. So the argument for, I guess, that doesn't hold as much weight to me as it does for those, you know, the lower kids that are saying, "I got to get here to school." And from a, a district financials side, you know, that's going to eventually increase our ADA, which is eventually going to increase our state aid. There's a lot, there are a lot of benefits from that.
And I feel like, honestly too, um, with our teachers and stuff, I don't think we're waiting till the end of the semester to challenge. No. I mean, I think we're challenging them, you know, and, and not saying that we are or aren't, you know, but, you know, I think we're challenging them constantly. It's a different kind of challenge, you know, in that last test, you know, as, as well. I mean, but, uh, you know, there's all kinds.
And I think some of us, I don't know what's supposed to keep speaking, but I think some of us will, me personally, like, seeing how many kids I had not take it or so last time, I will probably adjust maybe how the end of the semester comes and maybe try to, I don't know how many of them watch this video, sneak in. Going to sneak in a little pre-final test, if you will, for those of them that have earned their way out of there, just so they don't all, all run out excited in May, but, uh...
I, I guess that's just a, a concern as well. Because I know my daughter just completed high school last year and I know teachers such as Mr. Lee and certain ones are, are in there pushing, driving in. But then I know there's some that are a little bit more lax and I don't want to fall into this lull where, you know, we're, like I said, just having someone unprepared and, and I don't... My concern is just going from all to nothing, I guess. I just am changing the grading scale and, you know, there's just other things out there. So I guess it, you know, maybe a curriculum meeting coming up, we can have more discussion. I don't want to debate this all night.
If I may real quick, I probably would not have been a supporter of it had I not had my three in the same class with the same, you know, and, and thankfully I've been fairly blessed that they've been fairly self-motivated. But this program has been a motivator for, for them.
So we did this in the junior high as well. See, that's another thing. I just kind of heard it down the grapevine. We didn't really discuss it here. So I was just trying to kind of get my arms around everything.
I had to do dentist appointments that were scheduled at eight o'clock and hopefully find another kid that would take that spot, you know, worse I get three because they don't want to miss class. I mean, I got one dentist, I got a doctor appointment tomorrow morning. It's like, yeah, I'm good on, good on my attendance right now. You know, I mean, it's, it's getting them... I think we got a, we got ample enough teachers there keeping them motivated. I mean, it's, it's, it's a learning process. Maybe we've got to tweak it here and there. But I think it's done good for, I mean, I could speak highly of it.
So one of my three had to take the test because they had too many of the dentist appointments early in the morning. But, but I did see all three of them have a, a different sense of accountability to, not only making sure they were at school, but also through the, through the timeframe, making sure they kept their grade up and making sure they understood the, the information they were getting from the test.
Sounds mad, because a lot more positive than negative. Nothing else comes out of this, you know, but when they get out of work, of course, you've got to show up for it every day too.
Eighty percent per class or eighty percent across the board?
Each class.
And then, like Steph said, I'm, if you're freshmen and sophomores to college, you're going to need those study skills. That's when you're taking your majority of the cramming finals. And then upper class, you're writing, and then lab tests and all that. I don't know if you do like a cumulative across the board eighty percent. That would help any more or not, or...
It may. It would be harder to track than it is just with the individual classes. You know, and then, I mean, and then you get into the, to the spot too where if you, you can have a really low grade in one of those classes, maybe you do need to show, you know, a better standing in. But you got a one-hundred percent in this one over here that you, that you really didn't. And, you know, it doesn't balance, it balances it out, so. But you still have to show mastery over here, you know.
I guess that's kind of what went through my mind is if, if we were taking and, I'm not going to call them electives because you, you need them through high school as well, but if you're taking and testing core classes only, you're doing your math and sciences and reading or, you know, at some point in high school, that you're not going to potentially make it all the way throughout and not make, and not ever take a final. I don't know. Like I said, I, I'm sure we could continue to discuss this.
And I'll just give you one last quick example because I know everybody else wants to talk. And I won't get on the grading scale because that's a different thing. But I will tell you this. I am over halfway to a doctorate. I did not have much trouble in college or university or in my master's or my other bachelor's degree or even in my advanced classes now. And when I was in high school, we had a semester exam exemption policy. And all it was was perfect attendance. If you had perfect attendance, you didn't have to come and buy golly, you better believe I didn't miss one single day of high school. And I didn't take one final unless I needed to. There was a couple of Spanish classes that I went ahead and took the final in because I was on the border there. It was, you know, the, you know, not having the, the grade that I wanted in there. But I went in there and took that, um, you know, and, and, you know, I came out okay. So it is possible to not take any of the finals in school. They still challenged me. They still gave me really hard tests. They gave me a lot of really good formative assignments that, that, you know, made me really work hard and I really figured things out. I mean, when I did have to take finals in college, it was not really that big of a deal. So that's just one person. But I just want to give that quick example just from my own viewpoint.
Well, I think as long as we're aware, you're monitoring it, you're keeping statistics, we can kind of look back at it and see where we're going, feel, get a feel for the teachers, you know, down the road. I just don't want to leave it unsaid. And I appreciate all the information because I was definitely questioning what we were doing.
You just never know until you try it sometimes, you know. So that's what we're doing. We're just trying it out, see how it works.
I have a question.
Sure.
This is the first year for it?
Yes.
And it's high school and middle school?
High school through, uh, seventh grade.
Through seventh grade? So the numbers you give us was seventh grade through to the high school?
That was only high school.
That was only high school?
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else for the curriculum director's report?
I have a question. A couple of months ago, we bought science textbooks and coursework, I think, to the tune of about thirteen, fourteen thousand dollars. I'd asked if the new books or coursework had like a digital copy that we might have bought with them. So if parents had internet access, they didn't have to bring the books home. Do, do we know if it did?
Um, there was, I think, some see wrong, but I don't think that there's... I mean, if there's an internet-based thing, there was no internet license.
Because I've heard in the past, you know, some textbooks have like a digital copy or like a website you can go to and...
Some, some of them do.
And I didn't know.
I'm not sure if that one does in particular. It might have like resources online.
And I always envisioned when I, when I thought of one-to-one student-to-computer that there would be no more textbooks, that kids would never have book bags that weigh more than they do coming home. And my kids have one-to-one and they bring in their books. So, I mean, it's... It, it doesn't take the place of the textbook. And, um, I, I think another thing that our teachers are doing is not relying so heavily on the textbook to, to drive their curriculum, which is another positive thing. That they are using multiple resources and, and as long as we're making those things available to kids, which I assume we are, I, we haven't had complaints like we've had in the past of, and then not having the resources in their hands and thinking that, I think, we, we do all right.
Okay. Anything else?
Yeah, real quick. What we started doing back in November at the middle school is, uh, and I gave you guys all a chart of, we're calling it Academic Booth Camp. We do this every Friday for the first three, three-and-a-half hours of the day for all of our students. We found that a lot of kids were just not doing the work. You know, zero wasn't a punishment. This idea of giving a kid a zero, that's going to, you know, that'll, that'll learn you pretty good that you're going to get a zero, you know, you'll do it next time. It doesn't work. That, that was an out for a lot of our kids. So what we decided to do is, we're bringing them in every Friday and anybody has any missing assignment, whether it's the smallest missing assignment to the biggest project, they're doing it during their first three hours, usually PE, art, and, uh, band, or music. So, and, and talked to Mr. Hoyland and talked to our staff and realized a lot of our behaviors, our defined behaviors and stuff are linked to academic success. So we kind of put that all in perspective. And month by month, we've kind of kept track of, you know, when we first started in November, we had thirty-five kids with Fs in, in our middle school, sixth, seventh, eighth grade. And we were going to do a hundred immediate assignments that we finally found, made them do, show us that they knew how to do the skills. Which, that's, at the end, end of the day, that's what we wanted to see, that they know how to do the skills we're asking them to do. Not just simply, "Here, I'm done. It's not a zero. Get off my back." So through that, we've kind of done this each month. We've kept track. And what we're realizing now is, we can make the argument that academic success is linked to behaviors. You know, in October, we had a hundred behavior referrals, majors and minors, in the middle school. We started this program and now we're down to twenty-five in a month. And those are disruptions, being defiant in class, being noncompliant with, you know, certain behaviors and stuff like that. Our, our amount of our, our work we've collected and then done and assessed is, is unreal. Upwards of six hundred different assignments through all of our students we've collected. But the three main things I, you know, I kind of want to take away from this was, I did a survey of the kids that had been there more than three weeks in a row. And, uh, you know, one of the questions is, "Why aren't you getting, you know, why aren't you getting this work done?" A lot of them were afraid to ask for help. That's it. End game, a lot of kids just don't know how to ask for help. This gives them that outlet. We have kids in there now, probably upwards of ten to fifteen kids every Friday skipping their PE, which for middle school kids is, you know, like church for some of them. So, you know, they, they love PE. They love Dodgeball Fridays with Mr. Rose. So for them to come in there and say, "Hey, I'm skipping this because I need help on these, on these subjects," is a kind of testament to them wanting to do better, which feeds into, you know, the whole finals discussion to just have these kids want to be successful. We're just giving them those avenues to be successful. We've identified at least fifteen kids that have below-grade level deficiencies. So now we're seeing, you know, reading deficiencies, math deficiencies. We're being able to identify those kids at a younger age, except for when they walk through the high school and they're like, they just throw their hands up and, you know, drop out or quit or become a bigger behavior issue. And the biggest thing I, I kind of take away from it, it's made a lot of our teachers reevaluate their homework policy. You know, these days of, "Here's a crossword puzzle because that will teach you vocabulary," are starting to come to an end. You know, ki- teachers are giving stuff that actually means something. It matters. It teaches. It assesses. And I say most. Some of them are still. It's not, we're doubtful some of, some of them, but we'll get there. But the, the biggest part we take away is, it has, as a whole, it's changing the kids' approach to, you know, how they're approaching school, how they're addressing their work issues. We have kids that are, you know, skipping all the, working through lunch, you know, coming to work in my office during lunch during the eighth hour to get this stuff done and to make sure it's done right. Our math teachers are in there for two of the hours. Our science teacher is in there for an hour. And our social worker, our special ed teachers, you know, it's not just our special ed teachers working with special ed students. It's them helping those, you know, the, the lower-end kid and things like that. And it's, it's really a testament to our, to our staff, to our kids wanting to get better. And we've done this all in less than twenty-four hours, I mean, over the months. So, you know, it, it's working. It's just, uh...
Sounds very good.
Where do you do, do you, are you all together in one space? Do they go to different classrooms?
Oh, what we do is, first hour's eighth grade. And what we did was, we took, you know, an old classroom, took everything off the wall so it's a white room and put three tables like this in a U. And they have a list every day. They come in every Friday. They check, "What do you owe me?" And they get to work. And, you know, it can be, not necessarily that it's late work, but it's, you know, maybe they missed a day of school. And that's where we saw a lot of our late work coming in as well. "I wasn't here. I didn't get the assignment. I'm just going to take the zero." Kids were, "Okay, I'll take a zero because that means I don't have to do it. Great." So instead of chasing the homework, we're making them show us that I'll have to do it. And they don't walk out of that room until myself, Mr. Hoyland, Mr. Fleming, any one of our teachers is in there, checks it and makes them redo. We've had a lot of kids will just say, "Here, it's done." You know, we make them redo it and they hate it. But at the end of the day, I think that's, you know, that's best for them, is doing it, doing it correctly. But, you know, just being able to identify the kids that have those needs then. You know, this project, you know, has identified five kids who now have their special ed referrals. That, you know, I'm, I'm kind of sad it got to that point, but I'm also glad that we've identified that these kids are going to get the help they need. It's frustrating at days, but it's good. I mean, but it's, first hour's eighth grade, second hour's seventh grade, and, uh, third hour's sixth grade. But now we're seeing kids stay all the way through for three hours, getting help. And, and that's a choice. We're not forcing them to. That's a choice. If they're in there for more than two weeks in a row, we send home something to their parents, make them see it. So if you guys have junior high kids that haven't seen it yet, good. But now, I mean, we have kids on, on Thursday, late to the bus because they're going and turning stuff in before Friday morning so they don't have to miss Dodgeball Fridays with Mr. Rose. So, um, dodgeball drives our whole curriculum. But, you know, it's working. Uh, we're going to continue doing it and hope like you guys at the end of the year, numbers on everything.
That's great.
I'm more happy with the, going from a hundred behavior referrals down to twenty-five in a month. That's, gives me time to actually work with the kids that need help and, you know, be in classrooms instead of dealing with, I hate to say, stupid things on database.
Well, and you've cut your number of students in half too.
Yeah.
From November to February.
Yeah. And that's how I would love to see our study hall work here. You know, when, when they sit and they go in and, and sometimes accomplish nothing at the high school level, I mean, I would love to have it be kind of a, "You have anything missing? This is what you should be doing" kind of aspect.
And I, I guess a lot of this comes from, you know, talking to Mr. Field. My understanding of a middle school principal is to have them ready to walk through his door day one. I know his standard because he, you know, we've talked about it many times. So I want to get the kids to that standard by the time they walk to him. And we've talked about our schedule. We kind of, but we'll talk about scheduling, making sure that we're kind of doing the same things. And I know next year we're moving all the study halls except for two or three to the end of the day. There's not going to be any study halls mixed in and stuff like RTI study halls and things of that nature just so we can check in or check out with our kids every day. But it's working. Hopefully I'll give you guys end numbers in May. I hope they say that, love. If not, I'll forget that day. You can charge some.
Do you mind if I take it back on these two guys real quick?
Sure, sure.
I'll try to keep it a little bit more brief than these two. Talking about dodgeball. Mrs. Jamber and I went to a conference. It was filled in by a guy by the name of Rick Warlin. It was called Standards-Based Grading. Uh, we went there for two main reasons. One, Rick Warlin was a very dynamic speaker. Uh, he's got a lot of good stuff to say in the area of education right now. But the main reason that we went because of the standards-based grading, it's kind of like, a lot, it ties in with what we're talking about here. There were two main things I kind of want to share. First of all was how we look at report cards. Um, he kicked around this idea of moving from a, you know, we're talking about grading scale with letter grades and tied to a numeric value. Moving from that type of system to a system where you've got standards listed on a report card and you, on that report card, show their mastery or non-mastery, that, with, you know, how the kid is doing. I just feel like the Warlin's argument was that it communicates better from the teacher to the parent. But I think even more importantly, probably from the teacher to the student on if he's excelling or not. One way to kind of illustrate it better, he gave an example, so I'll just give it to you. He's pretending, you know, we've got a son, Johnny. You all have kids named Johnny. Uh, he's in fifth grade. Um, in the area of math, he's receiving an A-B. Now, you may or may not know that the teacher's covered multiplication, division, fractions in the course of that second grade period, but he's got a grade of B. So what would your guys' conversation be like with Johnny? You know, if it's anything like me, you'd probably say something like, you know, "If you tried a little bit harder, you'd probably earn that A next quarter." Or you might say, you might take the positive approach and say, "Well, you know, C is average. You got a B, so that's pretty good, right?" But, um, really, do you as a parent of Johnny know anything about that letter grade B? Do you know how he did in multiplication? Do you know how he did in division or with fractions or even his effort? And so his main idea was, you know, we, the, the word he kept using was aggregate. Like, all that stuff is aggregated within that grade of B. And he talked about the possibility of disaggregating that information, showing it on a report card. And then that way, we have a better understanding of this kid's, the student's efforts in multiplication, division, fractions, you even separate, separate category for his work ethic. So it's just something that we've been kind of kicking around and the administration's been talking about this kind of stuff for this past year. I know our teachers are, are interested in it. I think it's obviously would be easier to transition at the elementary level. I know kindergarten and first grade already have kind of a standards-based report carding system anyway because they don't, they don't do the A, B, C, D like the rest of the school does. Then I think it's probably tougher sales you before, but that's kind of what we're talking about here tonight. And then, uh, number two... And then, number two, just this idea of homework, I know this is, I'm not going to hit this one too much, just because we've talked a lot about homework tonight, but he talked about the idea, you know, it seems like we get bogged down as teachers with the day-in, day-out routine of assigning homework, grading homework, and putting all of our efforts into like one vehicle. But instead of focusing on the vehicle, we should maybe focus more on, on the end result, the standards, and that's what Mr. Field was talking about there at the beginning. What is it we want our kids to know? What, what are those things that are so crucial that we have to get them to know? And then spend our time focusing on those things, and then more importantly maybe is, what are the assessments that we can use, that these kids can show us evidence that they have mastered those standards? And so, it is just a different way of looking at it. I know, I remember as a teacher, I'm guilty myself, everybody got the same exact assignment, you know, and we focused on that daily, and it was very easy to grade, because all the homework assignments looked the same. But just kind of stepping outside of ourselves and maybe looking at a different approach of, I mean, because ultimately, you know, those standards are what we want the kids to know. I guess the hard part is, how do we get the kids to show us that? And so, that was just pretty much what we talked about at the conference. But, we're going to another one tomorrow on this same topic, but just to kind of keep you...
We know it will not be an easy transition, we discussed about starting with kindergarten and first grade. I know some school districts have looked at, for example, implementing it with kindergarten, and then the next year, that class moves on to first grade, you implement it in first grade. You know, I guess my only fear with that is, if it's not how you want it to go, I don't want to say you ruined an entire group, education-wise, that's not what I'm thinking, but there's so much room for error that we're not sure the best way quite to go about it yet. We discussed starting with kindergarten and first grade, since their report cards reflect similar to the standards already, our first grade does do letter grades, but there's this broken down in a different way compared to second through fifth grade. We even discussed maybe just starting with a behavior report card, because kindergarten and first grade, they do include a behavior portion on their report card, but once you go to second, third, fourth, and fifth, it's, it's not on there. Just some ideas that we're talking about, but like I said, we know it's not going to be a next-year implementation, you know, with kindergarten first, it will be a slow, slow progression.
Well, Brian, talk about it, my question was, are you working with the two things together? You talked, and maybe it was just your illustration, Johnny's got to be in class, but then showing mastery or not mastery. So are you still using a letter grade, a traditional letter grade, and then...
Breaking it down.
Going from there.
Our goal at the end would be no letter grade and just the mastery, but those are some of the questions that have come up. I think we had, Brian and I, also Mrs. Pearson from my building, and Mrs. Cummings from his building, attended the conference with us, just from a teacher's standpoint. I think we had discussed, maybe one of the easiest transitions would be to give a letter grade, and then on a separate note, I'd say, this is what was covered in that first quarter. We have to have discussions like, what does mastery look like? Because we all need to be on the same level in terms of, this is what we agree. What might be mastery in division in Mr. Britton's class, may not be in my class. So those are some of the hard discussions. How are you going to? You have formative assessments, you also have your summative assessments. It's getting teachers, especially upper grades teachers, they have different ways in terms of, you know, homework can be an assessment, but it's not always one that you want to take a grade on. I mean, there's a lot of factors that go into that, and we play the, the game of chasing homework a lot, when I think our time could be spent better doing formative assessments in the classroom. A formative assessment could be just a, a quick, in first grade, it might be get out your dry erase boards, okay, everybody, let's do a couple of math problems, and I'm going to come around, I'm not taking a grade on it, but I can tell who's got it and who doesn't just in a matter of five minutes. So, I mean, it's just things like that, that, um, we're trying to retrain some of our teachers.
Yeah, I guess I could see it possibly if you were elaborating from the letter grade, but then the problem for me as a parent, on that formative grade, you've seen my child do that.
Yes.
But how, you know, I don't have any to know that he or she has done it, you know, so...
Yeah, so, I mean, and like I said, this is just our, and I've talked to some other teachers in some other districts that are doing the same thing. I know our Jenna has spent a lot of their early dismissals this year working on doing this. Forsyte does the same way, they were choosing the approach of taking one class and following along through the ranks. And it happens to start with a kindergarten class this year, but I've already been informed by teachers that they are not ready to move on to first grade yet. So it, it, it's not a quick, if we're going to do it, I, my belief is, we need to do it right and make minor adjustments, instead of starting it and then going, oh boy, this is not what we want, and confusing the students, parents, and teachers.
There was a lot of information, like I said, this guy is very dynamic in his speaking, I mean, he, he's been doing this since the eighties, and we tried to pick up what he was, you know, all this thirty years of stuff, in two days, it was just impossible, he had a ton of stuff. But I, I asked the staff, our staff, you know, after I brought this information back to them, I said, where do you want to start? Of all this information, where do you want to begin? And the feedback I got from the staff was, they wanted to really spend more time on looking at our assessments, to see how we're... Because ultimately, we want these kids to show us the evidence that they know the standards, but it's going to take some time to figure out what those assessments look like. And I think the challenge would be, with the distance of the two buildings, the elementary, we're going to have to get together and decide together what mastery looks like of those standards, so.
Right.
It's, it's a lot of work, but it's exciting to do the same thing.
I think a lot of the drive with the student growth and looking more at monitoring student growth, which we're seeing coming, coming down the pipe, and in terms of evaluation stuff, is facilitating a lot more conversation about what our assessments look like, and what, what are you doing, what am I doing? Is this a good thing, is this not a good thing? You know, is, am I, am I using enough rigor within my assessment for me to see if that student has really reached that level? You know, what is their depth of knowledge in terms of this content of these skills? You know, are they simply able to regurgitate something and memorize facts, or can they synthesize something using this information, create something with this knowledge and this content that we have? I think that's starting a lot of conversations with teachers, to look at that, and it's, you know, that is a very far end game of what it all looks like, and it really has to be a cultural shift with not only, you know, the teachers and the schools, but also parents, too, which is a huge thing, because it's a total different way of thinking, you know, than anybody's had forever.
All sounds very promising, though, so I'm glad to hear it. Any questions before we move on? Okay, so, I have a reminder here that our board self-evaluation is going to be held on February twenty-fifth, from six to nine P.M., here in the boardroom. And then, under old business, we are, have also set the meeting for the full setting meeting to be held April ninth. It will be a Saturday meeting. I don't have the exact time yet, nine to four possibly. In thinking of that, I've talked to Mr. Meadows about, he's going to provide to us a list of names for the administrators and possible few teachers from each building to attend. And then each of us, on the twenty-fifth, if everyone can think of one, I believe the direction was to put one community leader in your communities that you would suggest coming to this meeting, and possibly go ahead and have an alternate in the, in mind to bring to the twenty-fifth meeting. I don't know that she'll take both of them, but that way, number one, if your one person is not available to come on the ninth, maybe your second person would, that type of thing. So just come with two people in mind for that meeting on the twenty-fifth. And then we'll, after, at the very end of that meeting, we'll go into open session for just a moment to basically set the times and everything for the April ninth meeting. Okay? And then, new business.
This is nothing new, oh, I don't know, this is something that's not necessarily new to the board, but just a discussion on a request in superintendent's office. I think one of the things that we will get out of this training that we're going to do is to come together as a board and have a common goal and a common direction. And along those lines, it's beneficial for me, trying to do my job on a daily basis, is to have clear direction on what the board as a majority, as a quorum, wants me to do. And instead of responding to an individual request, or, and not really knowing, is this something that the entire board, before I spend hours disseminating information, is this something that everybody wants to know and it feels it's important, or is it just one person? And if so, then, if it's a board directive, then, then I will do it. If it's not, then I think it'll be handled in a different manner.
Okay. And then I would just add to that, that I, the request that was just received last time, last month, I guess, or earlier this month, I didn't respond to Mr. Meadows until after he had completely compiled that, so you all did receive that information in your board packets. But then I also sent out, you know, in the future, we're going to follow this by the letter of the law. None of us as an individual can act upon any administrator, teacher, anything, ask them to do anything for us as an individual. We have to come together as a board, decide upon that. This is not, you know, you get your packet, you have a question about why verdict plumbing was played a certain amount, yes, call Mr. Meadows up, ask those consent agenda questions beforehand, so we're not spending six hours in a meeting doing it. But the things that he has to compile, to work on, we have to be working on as a board and not as individual board members. Just as I, when I asked my question about the, you know, final exams, you know, I'd like to discuss this at a board meeting, can you put it on the agenda and go forward from there? And that's how we all need to approach those things, so. I did send everybody out, I handed everyone this mo, this evening, the code of conduct that does either number three, I will recognize that a board member has no legal authority as an individual, and that decisions can be made only by a majority vote at a board meeting. And number four, oh, hold on just a second. I guess basically, I wanted to point out a few, but I don't have, I didn't list them ahead of time, so basically just to show that we're all not acting individually, because unless we're in here, we're meeting, we're talking about it, then we can't go on and request anything of any of our faculty, our staff, our administration, basically. Questions, comments before I move on? And I don't think that, he said if necessary, I don't think that there's a necessary motion for that, just in that it's already in every code of conduct and in our, you know, board members' training, that thing, and it's a common practice, so. And we already discussed the exemption process of high school final exams, so we have, I have a number C.
The next order of business, the athletic director from Mount Pulaski contacted Mr. Myers about the possibility of a high school cooperative agreement with Mount Pulaski for boys golf. Just a reminder for some of you, we did have boys golf here at one time, and we had a group of students that were interested in, I think five or six actually participate. They moved on, there wasn't the interest after that, and we dropped the program. And I think, again, with any time that we get a request on, of a co-op or a sport, whether it be, you know, we had wrestling in the past, where we didn't feel like we had the interest to go ahead with the co-op and bus one student or two students back and forth for wrestling at once, we'd delay them, but yet at the same time, we felt like we had enough students to send over for boys and girls soccer over to Meridian. You know, we, we need to look at those on an individual basis, and I think the only way to do that is to, to talk to our eighth graders and talk to our current high school students, nine through eleven, to see if there's an interest in doing that. It's also, I don't, again, that's up to you, if that's how you guys want me to pursue that, that's what, that's what we'll do, we'll do a sign up and, and try to develop the level of interest, and we'll come back in March and let you know what we found.
Well, I, I guess any time we do this, we need to make sure we're always compliant with title line, when you're talking about one, a boys' sport or a girls' sport, and see where we're at with that, with the soccer, the football, but with this, okay, where's that close to the title line?
And I, I think that's something that, that will also have to be addressed and looked at, and we can go from there.
Do you have a question?
I'm not aware that they do have a girls' golf team, and really, right now, they do not even have a, a coach, nor a boys' team. There is not an interest, but for whatever reason, they didn't want to let it drop, they wanted to see if they could reach out to some neighboring districts and see if they could...
I guess some fall sports?
Yes.
I guess, you know, I guess in my mind, we're just thinking, we already have two co-ops in place, you know, does Meridian have a golf team, or does Tri-City have a golf team? Or would they be interested? Because we used to have one, we could hope to split it down, I mean, those kind of options as well. So, I, I would be up for checking the numbers to see what the interest is, and then I guess we need to go around the table.
Side direction.
Yeah, right, so...
Find the interest in it first, then find out if Meridian's got, that they're interested, and I don't think it's, I think it's one A and two A, I think with golf, so I don't think the numbers are going to matter in enrollment. It shouldn't bump us up. No. So, and then if they don't, then I guess, you know, Bill only got two kids, Will only got two kids, it's probably not going to work, but...
So, around the table, starting with Brad, are you okay with Mr. Meadows checking numbers and getting back to us next meeting? Mike? Yes? Myself, yes?
Yep.
Mike?
Fine.
Okay.
Some kind of a, if we do find interest, we'll send out a cost association, we have a cost, our basketball program doesn't have a significant cost tag, so it's fairly easy decision there, but I don't know if golf is in one or not.
Right.
Well, if we have to bus, you know, if you're looking at the diesel, then, a trip's a trip. It's three hours regardless of whether they're driving to Mount Pulaski, Tri-City, Wormsburg, Meridian, a bus trip is a trip.
Do they have a golf course available to them?
Typically, what you do is you have a home course somewhere, I don't even know where it's closest. We'd have to take that into consideration.
They're bad on the math, either.
So those are, those are good questions as well, yeah. The home course.
Okay, so, proceed with that, and put it on the agenda to discuss at the March meeting. And then, have Dee set, St. John Valley High School graduation date.
Well, the, these two items, the high school and middle school typically go together. Some of the problems that we've had in the past, and it's not an issue this year, our Class A track state has always been at a conflict on that Friday. This year with, our graduation is actually almost a week later than what we've had in the past. I like the timeframe of our graduation, it's, we've never, since I've been here, we've never been completely done with school and then had graduation. That's typical of a lot of school districts. This year, we have an opportunity to do that. It's up to your guys' decision on whether you want to stick with the Thursday, Friday, or I'm sorry, the Friday, Saturday, junior high or middle school on promotion on Friday, high school on Saturday, or do you want to try doing a Thursday, Friday? The only feedback that I've ever had from kids, and I've talked to some seniors this year, is that they do like the idea of a Friday graduation, the fact that everybody has all of these graduation get-togethers, and that gives them more of the weekend to do those things, where if you have a graduation set at seven P.M. on Saturday, you're basically sitting around and waiting that day for graduation, and, you know, the, everybody has to get their hair done and all that stuff, and make sure your hat fits on just right. And then that kind of wastes one of the, the weekend days. So, I am not partial to one way or the other, it's not going to conflict with, with track this year, with the date, with, at least with one A track, it's going to affect me and my son, two A track, but that doesn't, I'll be here.
I always liked the Thursday, Friday, and we, we shifted away from that at the first or second year of this new district, because there were several parents that, that came to the board meeting and pushed you to have the Saturday, because they have a lot of people coming in from out of town. I, for years and years, both these districts, fire consolidation, Thursday, Friday, and I think they worked us fine. That's my opinion.
Yeah, I'd like to try Thursday, Friday.
Yeah, I'd like to try Thursday, Friday. Okay. My comment was gonna be for the out-of-towners, being a transplant and not having family directly here. I do have people coming from other places, but I think if you have a Thursday graduation, your eighth grade graduation is not also, the momentum is caving that your high school graduation is. So, with it being on a Friday, I think that's probably.
Plus, since years past from middle school, I, some of our kids, you know, we've had a pretty successful track program, they're missing their eighth grade graduation, or they're running in.
We had one run in last year.
In short, you know?
Last two years.
Yeah. So, you know, I, Thursday would, I know the kids would go for Thursday to stop into the eighth graders and stuff.
Okay.
I believe the motion's set for Thursday, Friday. So, if.
I hope people had to make that, we'll do that point.
Okay. So, do we want to go ahead and vote this evening then, to do, well, I just have to have all, all in favor? If you have to.
I think you'd still have to have a motion to, and a second, and then you do all in favor.
Okay. So, a motion to set the date for a middle school promotion on Thursday, May nineteenth, and seven P.M., and high school graduation on Friday, May twentieth, at seven P.M. And then, first by Leonard, is there a second?
I'll second.
Martha Leeper, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes seven. Okay.
And the last item is the 2016, 2017 school calendar. It's very similar to last year's school calendar with the start date. One of the things that, that we tried to do, or we wanted to do a little bit different this year, was to have the T.I. on the Monday, the fifteenth, and then come and do a half a day with more teacher activities in the afternoon. That kind of lets the kids ease in on that very first day. It would be eleven o'clock dismissal, and then Wednesday would be the first full day, the seventeenth, for students. Some of the other changes I highlighted down here, I would like to do a two P.M. dismissal through the first week with the possibility of maybe doing a two P.M. dismissal because of the heat the second week, depending on the forecast, and that's something that we could announce mid to late week of that first week. But again, that's something that, that's entirely up to you guys and what you want to do. Another change that we felt like was important was the parent-teacher conferences. In the past, we always did a Thursday evening parent-teacher conference, and then a Friday morning. The turnout for Friday morning, not very good district-wide. So, what we thought we could do is do a Wednesday, Thursday, parent-teacher conference, both in the evenings, four to eight, with a block set of time for the teachers to get fed. And then Friday would be a non-attendance day for everybody, teachers, students, nobody would come in on, on Friday. And I think that would help.
Are you dismissing it too on both of those days?
Yes.
So, Wednesday and Thursday, and then no school on Friday?
Correct.
Yeah, okay. I guess my only comment would be the same one I make every year when we do this, that school starts too early, and we've pushed it up a week, and it's, I don't know, I always, you know, hot, it's still the middle of August, the fair's still going on, kids show animals, especially in FFA and that kind of thing. So, I say it every year, and every year I get.
I bet it's said for lots of years.
You know, I know initially, it was because that way we could get semester exams in before, before Christmas break, but if we're not having semester exams, I don't know, I'm just throwing it out there.
Well, if you're, if you want to start later, we can do that as well, but then you're gonna look at.
Ending later.
Ending later, and.
It screws everything up, goes and makes kind of calendar, we try to start later.
And that's something that was taken into consideration with this calendar. And another thing is, is that the people that get kind of, I guess, for lack of better terms, kind of screwed in this deal are all sports coaches that are here anyway, and they're trying to have practice, and, you know, they're gonna be here. And then that just puts them later on into, you know, late May or June. And I think that, I've always felt like that's been kind of a, not necessarily a punishment, but kind of a, I don't know, we have a football coach here that probably likes to have the additional time for double sessions, but at the same time, likes to be done with school before Memorial Day.
Part of the job.
He was part of the, he was part of the calendar committee. We did sit down with the faculty, and one of the things that I'm going to request from them next year that we didn't have this year was, I'm gonna ask them to present, to come to me with a calendar. I'm going to do a calendar, and then try to sit down and come up with one that we all like. It seemed like this year, I don't know if they tried to pull one over on the new guy, but it seemed like some people came in with their own agenda, and I wasn't very happy on how the meeting turned out. And so, I kind of went back to the calendar I proposed. Sorry, calendar committee, but.
We probably have to hear the main kind of calendar, and I'm probably the only one here who would like to know the football playoffs and their expansion, and one of the things that have driven the last thirty, forty years, the earlier starts for school. So, you can get that, all that stuff in before Thanksgiving.
And another thing, it seems like we go, we have more kids each year go to Tech Academy, which I think the programs that they're providing there are absolutely outstanding for our kids. And if we start after Labor Day, they're missing two weeks of Tech Academy, and we, the district pays twelve fifty per student per semester to attend the Tech, the Tech Academy. So, I think that's time that would be, that would be wasted as well. It's hard to, to make those kids report to school and get on the bus when everybody else is sitting at home still on summer break. So, there are a lot of things to consider, and it's hot in August, but it's hot in September. And we've had some of our hottest days in mid-September, and you can't wait till October to start school. The only thing to be would put air conditioning in all of those.
Well, I, yeah, hook that on the agenda.
One more item that I want to point out is, we will be taking Veterans Day off, but one of the things that we talked about as a, district-wide, was the day before Veterans Day of having a group, an elementary getting together and having a Veterans Day celebration on the day before Veterans Day, the veterans coming in and talking to the groups, and that's going to take place over at Sangamon Valley West. And then, of course, the high school will, will do things within their, their government and history classes as well, like we've done in the past. So, there are activities going on, but I am not putting in a waiver to take Veterans Day, to go to school on Veterans Day.
I'll make a motion to approve the 2016, 17 calendars present.
Motion made by Leonard.
Second.
Second by Mike. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Not motion passed. All right. So, from there, we need a motion in our closed session for the reasons stated on the agenda.
Motion.
Made by Brad. Second.
I'll second.
By Mr. Stone. Colwell, please. Leeper, yes. Oakley?
Yes.
Staub?
Yes.
Stahl?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Centola?
Yes.
Guerrero?
Yes.
I need a motion to accept the closed session minutes as we're at the closed session.
So.
Motion made by Leonard Williams, is there a second?
I'll second.
Brad Centola, Colwell, please. Uh-huh, Staub?
Yes.
Stahl?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Centola?
Yes.
Guerrero?
Yes.
Leeper?
Yes.
Oakley?
Yes.
Okay. I need a motion to accept the resignation of Caleb Worsom as high school mathematics teacher and assistant boys' basketball coach effective at the end of the 2015, 2016 school year. So, move. Motion made by Martha Leeper, is there a second?
I'll second.
Mike? Oakley, Colwell, please. Stahl?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Centola?
Yes.
Guerrero?
Yes.
Leeper?
Yes.
Oakley?
Yes.
Staub?
Yes.
Stahl?
Yes.
Stahl?
Yes.
Motion to accept the resignation of Rachel England as Sangamon Valley Middle School assistant softball coach, pending her employment as Sangamon Valley Middle School head softball coach. Motion made by Mike Staub, is there a second?
Second.
Brad Centola, Colwell, please. Centola?
Yes.
Guerrero?
Yes.
Leeper?
Yes.
Oakley?
Yes.
Staub?
Yes.
Stahl?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Motion to employ Jennifer Peters as Sangamon Valley West Elementary library aide.
Motion.
Made by Brad Centola, is there a second?
I'll second.
Mike Staub, Colwell, please. Guerrero?
Yes.
Leeper?
Yes.
Oakley?
No.
Staub?
Yes.
Stahl?
Yes.
Williams?
Stay.
Centola?
Yes.
Five?
Yes.
Pass. Sorry, making my notes. Motion to employ Don Hartlog as a Sangamon Valley Middle School boys' track coach.
I'm moving.
Mike Staub, second by?
Second.
Brad Centola, Colwell, please. Leeper?
Yes.
Oakley?
Yes.
Staub?
Yes.
Stahl?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Centola?
Yes.
Guerrero?
Yes.
Motion to employ Rachel England as the Sangamon Valley Middle School head softball coach.
Motion.
Brad Centola, is there a second?
I'll second.
Mike Staub, Colwell, please. Oakley?
Yes.
Staub?
Yes.
Stahl?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Centola?
Yes.
Guerrero?
Yes.
Leeper?
Yes.
Motion to grant leave to Michaela Good under the Family Medical Leave Act beginning approximately May thirteenth, 2016, to the end of 2015, 2016 school year for the purpose of maternity leave. So, move. Motion made by Martha Leeper, is there a second?
I'll second.
Mike Staub, Colwell, please. Staub?
Yes.
Stahl?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Centola?
Yes.
Guerrero?
Yes.